Okay, Mr. Keiger, you have questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm okay with these two. And we're gonna get to the next one.
Right.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter.
I'm okay. I can just say that our committee worked really hard on this for days.
Months.
Months, days. And we did get input a lot from a lot of the staff, a lot of individuals, and really worked real hard. So, a lot of my questions were answered at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Monat, you have questions, comments?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Dr. Sane, you can go ahead with the other two policies.
Okay. Looking at the next policy, are we ready for 5210? Is that where you're ready? Okay. This is a complete rewrite of this policy. The prior policy had dictated that a policy committee, excuse me, a distribution of literature committee meet once a month and hand review every single piece of paper that came across us that folks were asking for. We reviewed other policies thanks to Sarah's help in the district. And again, they showed a range of philosophy about whether or not you handle every single piece of paper or whether you delegate and give people parameters by which to use. At current time, we receive three to five advertisements a week to review in fall, for the fall festivals. And the spring festivals, we receive many more. It's amazing how much this particular county does. But the reality is, is that the expectation is that we send them all home in book bags. When we looked at the policy, we really don't have to send everything home in book bags. There were provisions for things to be held in the coaches' office, in the guidance office, where it's appropriate, where students could be encouraged to take one, in the office for the, in the main office. So, provisions for that. We wanted to, basically what we've been doing is we've been a free advertisement agency for all sorts of people. And you would not believe how many partnerships we have with entities who would like our services and like our support. And no, we don't run off the ads. They do send them bundled in thirty. Well, kids don't come in groups of thirty, so we do have to rebundle. And it does take time. And I'm sure that any elementary teacher could talk to you about the number of times that they've had to send something home in the backpack on the Friday date or the Monday date when everything goes home. And then what happens to it? Quite frankly, it's a non-productive advertising system. Because most of the time, people take it right out of the backpack, parents unpack, and guess where that one gets filed? That rectangular file. Right. The circular one. Right. Thirteen. So, the reality is, why are we doing that? It's probably not a good idea. So, what we did, the distribution of literature committee met and said, "No, this is not good. We need to redo that." We recommended that the policy be rewritten. And as you look at it, you'll see that we still allow three entities to send their flyers to schools. Local, state, federal government agencies and departments. For example, Parks and Rec. In addition to that, nonprofits are offering educational, recreational, or cultural or character development activities. Those are allowed. Commercial or tax-exempt entities that have partnerships with Cabarrus County Schools. And like I said, you'd be amazed. I'm not sure all of these are on our partner list, but they would claim to be.
Yeah, Dr. Sane, if I could interrupt Mr. Chair, because it's right in this section here. What about things like scholastic books for elementary? Because I know that not only is an inexpensive way for parents to build their home libraries, but they would be under for-profit, I would think.
Scholastic? I would think they might be.
Yeah. So, are we saying we can't send scholastic flyers home anymore?
They're curriculum-related in that they're reading materials.
Where would that fit in here? That's a non-school group.
Sarah?
I would think that would fit under C as a commercial or tax-exempt entity with a partnership. Because typically when scholastic comes, if we sell X number of dollars' worth of books, they, in exchange for hosting the book fair, the school receives some books as well. And so, I would think that they would fit under C.
Because I don't want to have PTO lose their fundraiser or the teachers lose their ability to get books.
They are a very important partner for our schools.
Yeah, right. And the change is, is how the material is requested for review in that it goes to the school level instead of coming to the district level. The distribution is defined in that it's handed to students before and after school hours and during lunch hours, available for students to pick up during non-instructional time, or it's available to be displayed. I was amazed at the number of little summer camps that had little signs out in front of the schools, which in a way, I thought was much more effective because I, as the parent, might be driving by rather than my child tossing it out when they got home from school in clean-out-the-book-back time. So, what our plan of action is, should you agree this, we plan to write a letter to all those entities who have distributed information this calendar year. We'll post it on the website. And then the principals have requested that Sarah walk them through a training. Because one of the things that we have to, we have to share with them is you can't choose one group over another. It has to be fair to all groups. So, this is our first draft, first read of a new method of handling non-instructional materials.
Okay. Board members, you have any further questions on this particular policy? Start, Ms. Monat side.
Here again, I'm gonna refer back to earlier years. And I don't even know if Cindy was in, on the board at that time. But I remember the formation of the committee.
Right.
Occurred because of some religious materials that were being distributed in the schools. And I don't see that addressed here.
As in?
At that time, the committee was formed to look at the materials and decide whether they could be distributed. And the religious materials could be displayed for children to pick up if they wanted it, but they could not be given to the children.
It's interesting how that involved. If you're talking about the harvest festival that a particular church would offer in the fall, and we must have a ton of those harvest festivals that go on. If the focus is on the harvest festival, we, in the past, had allowed that to go home. We don't necessarily think that that's a wise use. We think that if you want to put a stack of those in the front office and somebody wants to pick them up, that's fine. But we don't think that those should go home anymore. And it's not just one religion, it's all religions. A bake sale, we get requests for yard sales, we get requests for you name it, you know, we'll do it. And we'll only charge you a small fee. And by the way, it's educational.
Well, I don't know if anybody in this room remembers that issue.
I do.
Do you? And it was, it was a little more involved than a harvest festival.
Right.
It was a very difficult, contentious situation.
And that has to be, that has to be part of the training. And we are more than happy to serve as continued resource. Even though it's not in the policy, I've scheduled the distribution of non-instructional literature committee to meet twice next year. There is an appeal process if the school says no, and they want to appeal it. And as always, I have a direct number to Mark Enricus or Sarah Stone where we can find the legal language to support what we need to say.
Ms. Carpenter.
Now, do you have a committee? I mean, we're, I'm sure it's in here somewhere, and I should, do we have that? We have that somewhere in here, right, about the appeal? Or is it listed in here?
I took the committee, the language of the actual requirement to form that committee, we took it out of here. But there is a repeal process. Where is that?
It's, it's on the first page. Organizations wishing to appeal the denial of a request to distribute or display may do so according to, and we refer them to, our student and parent grievance process. And so, that would start with a, you know, you're basically grieving the principal's decision, you do a formal grievance to the principal's decision, and then it would move up to county office.
Okay. So, we do have, and we've, but we've got basically a committee already formed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That would hear that. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Keiger, you have comments, questions?
Just a brief comment. Excuse me. And I do want to, Ms. Carpenter mentioned something that I would like to go back to and thank her and anybody else. Because it's clearly evident that a lot of time was spent on questions that, quite frankly, there's no good answer to sometimes. And so, anyway, thank you for your efforts and anybody that was involved with that. As far as this particular policy goes, I think we've taken a reasonable approach to try to rein in something that, quite frankly, is probably, I guess I shouldn't say out of control, but it's turned into something a lot bigger than probably anyone anticipated when it seemed like a good idea. Hey, we'll just review it all, and then we'll tell them. Well, we now, with, I don't know how many more schools we have since that time, but it's probably quite a few. So, at the school level, make no mistake, we're gonna get criticized. There's gonna be something that somebody's gonna want to send out that they're not gonna be able to, that we're all gonna get emails, that we are gonna get criticized for. But, at the end of the day, at 50,000 feet where we are supposed to be, not down at the school, but up here, I think we're taking a reasonable approach. Having the Parks and Rec part in, that's been something that's longstanding in this community. There's other things that are longstanding.
Right. Boy Scouts can call scouts.
Boy Scouts. So, I think we've taken a reasonable approach to try to accommodate those things that make some sense without trying to do every single piece and have you and your office review every piece of paper that's coming down the pike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Looking at it from a different point of view, I don't want to be running out of town. But you think about this, you know, newspapers do this all the time. You get your Sunday paper, you get your Wednesday paper, they got this pamphlet full of all these sales papers, all these people wanting to sell you something. Think about it as a fundraiser for the schools. If it was, you know, they'd bring it on, and hey, we'll put it together for you at $50 a month, $100 a month, whatever, and it'd be a fundraiser for the schools. But anyway, that was just a little different look on it.
Only if I can use that money to hire the person to do it.
Well, you know, there's always a way to figure it out.
Yes, sir.
But, okay. Ms. Blackwater, you have comments?
That's a great caveat, Dr. Sane. The only thing I have is, we're all over the place again with the board.
Oh, okay. I can go back and...
Yeah. It's in several different paragraphs. Also, we don't have anything listed as a cross-reference down here, but I'm thinking there's another policy that should be cross-referenced. I know it deals with, and I think that what Ms. Monat and Ms. Furtenbaum were alluding to a few minutes ago, that was addressed in that particular policy.
Go back and put those in on second read.
Yes, those cross-references. That'd be great.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Furtenbaum, you have some comments, questions?
I do, Mr. Chair, of course.
I figured you did.
Dr. Sane, on the top of page two, where it says, "Be nonprofit entities," to kind of go back to what Ms. Monat was saying, nonprofit entities do include churches.
Oh, I know.
And we have had several, you know, different issues over the years. So, is there gonna be some clarification? Because when we say cultural or character development activities, or programs related to school-aged children, that could imply Sunday School. And so, I think we need to kind of watch that wording. I don't want to be mean to any churches, but there have been a number of issues that consume time and cause conflict in the district, who, one church has been negative to another faith and so on, and they were using our property and sent out flyers and posted at the school and whatnot.
Right.
And then the second thing is, because this addresses display, which I think is very smart, do the groups who rent our facilities, do they have the right to display things outside of the time of their rental? So, for example, we have a church that rents an auditorium. Do they have a bulletin board there where it's visible?
At the school?
Yes.
At this point, I don't think they have a board at the school, but what they do have is a freestanding sign outside of the school. I've seen them that this particular church meets at this...
Yeah. And I think that's fine if they're renting and whatnot, as long as it's not a permanent structure. We did have one school a few years ago where they were putting a permanent structure on our property.
Oh.
Like, a wood stakes in the ground. Some of you may remember that. And that was not very cool.
Ooh.
You know, because that, it was like right next to our school sign. It's like, no, we're not endorsing you, sorry. But I just want to make sure, like I said, from the standpoint of that because they're renting, one, that does not mean there's an exemption, and also that this letter B cannot be extended to construe nonprofit, we deal with children, therefore, we can post whatever we want to.
I will work with Sarah to word that a little more closely so that we're more careful about that.
Okay. And then Chairman Shu, I'm not disagreeing with you to earn some money, but I have a little different take on that. And Ms. Boone is not here tonight, but just something, and maybe Sarah, you can tell us, this is a really bad idea. But all of our school webpages now link back to the district's webpage, right?
Right.
What if we had a page, or pages? And I know we have employee discounts at different places. What if we had where people could buy space? It would have to be screened on who was allowed to buy space, but could buy space to advertise their summer camps, their bookstore, whatever, something that was related.
We already do that, I think, I'm sure, in student newspapers and yearbooks and athletic programs.
Right.
So, I don't see why we couldn't do the same thing.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
You know, that there's, and I don't know what the rate would be or anything, but have...
I'm sure we could come up with one.
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm thinking, and is Mike here? I don't know if I saw him before. You know, with, you have a category, that's bookstores that have children's books, and they pay so much annually or something to advertise there. And not huge, full pages, but links with little icons or something.
Sure.
So, anyway, so, Mr. Shu, I'm thinking along the same lines.
There you go.
Well, when you think about it, you know, 29,000 kids and growing, that's a lot of parents.
It is.
And that's a lot of advertising exposure. And, you know, if they want it, maybe we can figure out a way to give it to them.
I'll bet you we can.
Where it will be beneficial to the system. And so...
There you go.
We just never know what a group can put together when they get to thinking about things.
That's right.
Okay. Do we have any other questions on this policy 5210?
Well, I've still been wanting to put it on the side of the bus. Y'all haven't been wanting to put it on the side of the bus.
Now, Ms. Carpenter, you know, I can't put it on the side of yellow school buses.
Mrs. Carpenter, I want the revolving lights, like, you know, that it streams. And so, today's message is...
There you go.
This bookstore, tomorrow's message is this restaurant. I don't know.
We'll work out a deal.
Well, you know, you've got to be innovative, because we've been labeled as being innovative. So, we've got to keep that title, you know, I guess. Now, I think that's all that we have for you. Is that right, Dr. Sane?
It is. Just those three, and I'm asking for approval on first read.
Okay. Board members, we've had a lengthy discussion on these items here, on the policy revisions for the first reading. And with the notated comments that each of you have made, do I have an approval, I mean, a motion that we approve these for the first reading?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve what the suggested changes or modifications.
Okay. I have Ms. Furtenbaum made the motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Is that Ms. Monat made the second? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, 6-0.
Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move on to 7.4, the QSCB replacement of electrical switchboard project. We need Mr. Conley to come back to the podium and tell us about this, and then we'll look at it and vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a bid opening on the 11th of June for Central Cabarrus High School switchboard replacement project. This is a code-related replacement. And the bids were favorable. Watson Electric Company Incorporated was the low bidder at $187,780, which was $6,600, below budget. And we recommend that it be approved.
Okay. Board members, do we have any further discussion on the Central Cabarrus High School switchboard replacements? Do we have any comments, questions?
Where is this company out of?
I believe they're lo, I know the owner's local, I believe. He has a, he actually has a student, I think, that's at the school, right?
The other one, there's two Watsons.
Yeah. This isn't Watson Construction, this is Watson...
Watson Electrical Construction.
They're not the same.
Is the one that has kids in our system.
Okay.
But this is the other, this is Watson Electric, which is a Charlotte firm.
Okay.
Which they both are.
They're out of Charlotte.
But, I mean, the owner of that firm has, lives in Cabarrus County, the other firm.
Okay.
Okay. Board members, any further questions? Okay? No further questions? May I have a motion?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm just curious, Lee, who signed this at the bottom? I thought we normally, like, had either the architect or, I don't know who verifies that. I don't know who this...
Alan, is that Alan Jordan?
Yeah.
They're with McCracken Lopez. They're a Charlotte-based firm that we, that's been retained to do the design work.
Okay. I just didn't recognize that. Because normally, we see, this form is a little primitive?
It's different. It is. Well, initially, we had one handwritten, and we had them put together a signature block on it.
Okay. And this still has Carrie's name on it? Do you see that on the lower left?
Carlotta.
Carlotta? Okay.
Carlotta, yes.
Okay. Okay. I just, yeah, it'd be nice, we may want to set some expectations to our associates that we hire, that we like a little more professional views.
I'm sure he'll, I'm sure he'll get around to that.
I'll let him know.
Okay. Board members, with no further discussion on this item, I'll need a motion that the contract for the replacement of an electrical switchboard project for Central Cabarrus High School be awarded to Watson Electric Company in the total amount of $187,780. Do I have such a motion?
Comment, second.
I have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries, 6-0. All right. And Lee, we have 7.5, which is another request to move funds for Central Cabarrus. And so, you can tell us about that.
This request is a modification for Central Cabarrus High School for the chiller project to, to fund the installation of a platform and a ladder and a non-chemical water treatment system that wasn't in the original scope of work for the, as part of the chiller replacement project. And based on discussions we had previous, what we're recommending is that we move funding from the technology projects at Mount Pleasant Middle School and Jan Freese Middle School in the amount of $17,000 from Mount Pleasant Middle School and $3,000 from Jan Freese Middle School Technology into this project, the $20,000. So, it changes from the original, what you have in front of you, based on our discussion previous.
Right. Board members, this is the one that we were talking about earlier when Ms. Klutz was at the podium. And, you know, originally, we voted in June, on June 18th, on our consent agenda to approve $8,500. And in talking with Mr. Whitkey today, since the building, Central Cabarrus, is as old as it is, the, I believe you said, the engineer, or the architect, or someone felt like that we needed to have an extra contingency there. So, the difference between $8,500 and $20,000 is that contingency. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The original $8,500 that we approved on June 18th, that is null and void at this point. And so, now, we are asking for a request to move these funds for Central Cabarrus High School. Board members, does anybody have any further questions on this? I thought we covered it pretty good earlier, but if you have questions, now's the time to do this.
My understanding from Ms. Blackwater was that she wanted to deplete the $37,254 from the technology fund. So, I depleted those funds, removed $37,254 from Jan Freese. Then I took the remaining balance, $14,246 from Mount Pleasant Middle School. That would leave a balance of $2,913 in that line item, but that would take care of the Wyancoff Elementary, server switches wireless, and that would allow us $31,500 that were over on that bid, and it would also allow for the $20,000 in the Central Cabarrus, replace chillers and controls. I took that direction earlier. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes. I think that was what the board had decided to do. And so, without repeating that particular motion there, we, I think, is everybody clear on what we're doing? Okay. Ms. Monroe, are you clear on the motion?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Board members, do I have a motion?
I will make the motion, Mr. Chairman, based on the verbiage that we've just discussed.
Absolutely. And that, this would be a long, a long, drawn-out motion. So, since you've got all the things that you need, we'll leave it at that. And Ms. Blackwater's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries, 6-0. Okay. We need to move on now to 7.6, and this is where Ms. Klutz is gonna give us a...
And that is basically what we just did, a modified 7.6.
Okay. Okay. So, that covers, so we did it all together on that then?
Together.
All right. So, 7.7 is the electrical panels for several schools, the safety arc flash project. And Mr. Conley, you gonna talk to us about that?
Yes. This project is for 24 schools. It's a, it's a safety study on the breakers at 24 different schools. It provides for safety training, for labeling of the panels, and also for clothing for the technicians that are working on the panels. It provides for cleaning, vacuuming out all the panels. But basically, it's an OSHA mandated safety compliance for the workers that work around the electrical panels. So, it's really important from a liability standpoint that we get this work completed. The project was rebid. It was bid once, but the, there weren't enough compliant bidders. There were two, there were three bidders the first time around, and the only bidder that, that was compliant was way over budget. So, we rebid the project last Thursday, and it came in under, under budget, thankfully. Siemens Industrial Corporation was the low bidder at $244,184. And this is approximately $85,000 under budget. And it includes the first alternate, which is for the safety clothing. They're gonna actually purchase some clothing for the tech, the techs to wear when they're working around the panels. And it also provides for training funding. So, we recommend Siemens Corporation.
Okay. Board members, you have any questions, comments, concerns on this? Ms. Blackwater?
Lee, these bids are way off. I'm real concerned about that. Do you have an idea of why, or maybe this is a Lynn question, but, you know, to go from 244 to 635 to 875, that's a huge difference.
It is. The first bids came in, the first section bid, we had three bidders that bid it, and they were all over the map, too. And we figured that it was because some of the firms were so small that they were questioning us about the schedule and how they were gonna man the job. And I think because, you know, their labor rates maybe were higher, I mean, there are 24 schools that we had. The initial bids came in, we couldn't even bid, we couldn't even do two groups of eight schools. schools, we split them into three groups because we concerned about the budget. Siemens Corporation, they're a big group, I mean, they're doing a lot of our controls work, and we think that because of their size and their ability to, to, to sub some of the work out to some minority contractors, which is what we believe they're doing, they're able to get, to get better pricing. That's, you know, I don't know if I answered your question, but.
What was the project budget for this? I'm sorry, I heard you say it was $X dollars under budget, but I don't remember.
Well, it was, it was $320,000, I believe, something around there, yeah. If you look at, yeah, it's about $329,000, I believe.
Yeah, and something I noticed, and we often see this on bids, in the event that we did not take alternate one, they have the low bid, and, but they, it gets much closer, they're still low, but it gets much closer adding the alternate, and.
$196, $875.
What's that?
It goes with number two.
No, not with number two.
It goes with number two, but, I mean, there's a huge difference, I just, that's, it's such, if it was $40, $50, $100,000, I wouldn't think, but we're talking $600,000 difference. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, well, I see the, the schedule issue being plausible, though, from the standpoint of when they have to get it done in a short period of time, don't have in-house staff that they can manipulate their schedules to finish our work altogether, all of a sudden, they've got to go out and hire and contract, and they're paying higher rates to get that short-term labor, if it's something they don't normally do. I mean, I agree, it's really a huge difference, but they also recovered a good bit of it on alternate one, so.
Yes, and I think, as Lee pointed out, normally, I get a little more upset if we're talking about a questionable contractor that's bidding low. We're not talking about a questionable contractor, it's a very substantial firm, they do a number of different types of service work for us, we know them, we work with them, I don't have any qualms about having them take, take this project, because of the fact that they relate to us in so many other ways, we have a little bit of clout with them as well. So, I, I would feel completely differently if this was a, a construction firm we had not dealt with before, and it was really questionable in terms of what, you know, how, how well they could staff it, but I think they've demonstrated they, they can do that pretty well, so.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Everybody clear on what we got here? Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion that the contract for the electrical panel safety arc flash project for various schools be awarded to Siemens Incorporated the amount of $244, $184, including the base bid and identified alternate bids. Do I have such a motion?
Someone.
I have a motion by Ms. Minnet, second. Mr. Kiger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Conley. We can move on now to the Wincoff Elementary IT project, and you can continue on with this item.
Okay, we also, on Thursday, we received bids for the Wincoff Elementary School technology project, this was the last project that we bid, last school we were bidding for, for the wireless technology, and it came in overbid to the tune of about $31,500 over budget. And we were looking at transferring funds into this project so that we could, you know, we could make this work.
Yeah, well, we, this is also part of what we discussed earlier.
Yes, it was.
$31,000 came from, we discussed it pretty good, I think, also, but, board members, before we vote, one last chance, anybody have any questions or concern?
Mr. Oh, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Furtenbaugh, go ahead.
I wanted to ask Dr. Probst, in the past, we've had technology projects, and we've had, then bid as two different packages, we've actually, and they're, and they're close, in this case, they would be about $10,000 away. Is there value to awarding this to one company to do both? I'm not sure what your staff thinks about that, but it looks like CNIC would have the best combined package to have one vendor do all the work.
In the previate, in the previous QSCB projects, what we've done is followed the rules, and we've not done the combined, we've done the separate vendors.
Okay, is, is there redundancy at all, as far as, I'm just thinking of the cabling, I'm not sure, I've not seen what's in each of these packages, so what is in these packages? They're obviously related, but is there overlap that it would be beneficial in the long run to have one vendor do all the work?
No, in fact, we actually found the opposite, because they were doing separate types of work, and so when they came in as two different companies, that has not been an issue.
Okay.
Actually expedited it.
Okay, just for future, Dr. Shepherd, I'd like to see at least a paragraph summary of what's in these packages for bid, because it's unclear to me, networking, cabling are such general terms, they would seem to be very related to me, but if they're not, I don't have any evidence to make that judgment, to, you know, to recommend that we would pick a combined company, I was just looking at, to me, they would seem to be very related, but I don't know what's in the packages, because we haven't seen it. So we're approving bids, Mr. Chair, without really knowing what we're approving.
Yeah, that, and that was the cause for concern, because as, as you know, we got this information in rather late today, and we didn't have, you know, everything that we really needed on this, and so I, I'm even unsure about the motion here, because we've got two different entities, that one's doing cabling, the low bidder for the cabling, and then we got another one, this is the low bidder for the network, and so, see, that's not spelled out in our motion, and so.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could, this is the way we've been, we've bid these projects, all of the projects have been, have been split out that way. The equipment is, one, one side is the equipments, it's, it's the switches, it's the, it's the wireless access points, and the servers, and, you know, that's package two, and then bid package one is for actually the entity that's, that's, that's putting all the cabling in in the ceilings, and, and sometimes the fiber, too, right? So, that, that's the way they've been split out.
Yeah, and I'm concerned here on Carolina Advanced Digital, I don't, I see an NA under warranty solution, if that's really what's under the network, it's the servers and switches and whatnot, I expect to see some warranty to their work.
I, this is the first time I've seen this document, too, and I will, I will tell you that CAD is, is under warranty, because that's where we get all our switches, so it could be just a mistake under there, I, I have to contact the designer. This is a signed bid form, Mr. Chair, and we're expected to approve it as is.
But I'm kind of, excuse me, I'm kind of confused. Am I on or am I off?
Mine's, there I am, because I'm kind of confused, because if you say cabling and networking, and you add $39,199.68 and $118,695.10, you add those two together, that's less than what you're wanting me to approve total for the amount that you're asking me to approve.
No, we're asking you to approve the top line for the cabling, which is $33,210, and the second-to-last line, Carolina Advanced Digital, is $114,667, those two are both less than.
So, 33 and 114, then. So you're saying going with two different ones, then?
That's correct.
Yes, because we buy, if we weren't using QSCB, quite frankly, we would probably go to CAD, that's the vendor, our sole source vendor for that, so that is what we would be recommending.
Well, since we had two bids, and obviously, and we got two different low vendors, then we'll obviously have to have two motions. Is that not right?
I don't believe so, I believe in the past, we've done the same thing, we've had one bidder to go in and install the fiber, pull the data lines, and the data drops, and then we've had a second contract bidder for actually ordering the equipment.
Let's defer this to Ms. Stone. Ms. Stone, you know, you're our representative here, so where are we at on this? If we can get your technology department here.
Thank you. I mean, I, I see that it's currently formatted to do one motion, but I think we could easily either do one motion and say, I approve company A and company B for dollar amount A and dollar amount B respectively, or you can certainly do two motions, do one for contract A and one for contract B, it's to the board's pleasure, there's no legal issue on my end.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like two motions, because I want to add a modification to the motion for Carolina Advanced Digital.
I'm sorry, I still have a question. What is RCDD and SPLV, you know, I picked up on also the warranty issue, and you answered that question, but they don't have any of these things that, it looks like everybody else does at the higher.
Those are special licenses that they have and training to actually, it's like the PAN-DUET, is PAN-DUET on here? Yeah, PAN-DUET certification, so that they're certified to actually do the install. I don't know, I don't know the actual acronym, do you know what the acronym is for RCDD?
Is that necessary for what we're doing with this particular project?
Yes, it is, we want to make sure.
So why would we use one that doesn't have it?
Oh, the, these are, this is equipment down here at the bottom.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so that's not necessary for what, that second part of the bid.
They do no installation, they're just our, our vendor for supplying the switches.
I've never, I've never heard of that one.
Oh, I'll be honest, I haven't either, and I'm in the industry.
Yeah, really.
Okay, so clarifying again, I, I know we don't have a meeting for a month, but I really do not want to approve this as is. Carolina Advanced Digital, that's only for procurement of hardware that will be delivered to the door.
Yes, that's correct.
And who's installing it?
Technology.
We install it. So therefore, they won't have any service installation, or service warranty on it, but there needs to be some kind of a, and I actually wonder, why then are we going through a third party? Why are we not buying from a vendor? Which is exactly what we said at the beginning of the QSCB project, but the rules with QSCB make us pay someone to do what we would do. This is the exact same process we've used for the eight other projects, this is the ninth one. I will tell you, I was a little disappointed that it came in $30,000 over, I can't explain that, we bid them the same way, and we spect them the same way we did the others. All that said, I'm very pleased with how well those IT projects have gone. In the past, we've done the same thing, we've had a bidder who comes in and installs the wiring and the fiber, and then we've also had a separate one buy us the equipment. Okay, I will tell you, this is the reason why companies form subsidiaries to do the purchase of equipment, when there are rules for their accounting and whatnot, and so, not that I want to try to get around something, but just like we have turned over properties to the county to get the sales tax rebate all throughout the year, there may be a mechanism here for the QSCB to let the county be our purchase arm, or someone else that they can buy directly from a vendor, and then they, we buy it from them, there may be ways to not put taxpayer money out through someone who's just a middleman to deliver equipment, so it might be worth looking into. I, I think that you are absolutely correct, except where the rules are around the QSCB. The, the idea with the QSCB was to stimulate the economy with the middleman, so I think that that's why all these rules existed. And that may be true, so, Mr. Chairman, do you want to make, all right, can I go ahead and make one of the motions?
Well, let me, let me see if anybody else has any questions, Ms. Furtenbaugh, does anybody on my right side, Mr. Kiger, Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Minnet, anybody have any questions, comments?
No, we're just eager to hear how this motion.
You guys have been pretty quiet on this side over here now. Y'all been real quiet over there. Okay, Ms. Furtenbaugh, if you'll give us the motion here, we'll.
Okay, the first one will be easy, I'll make the motion that the iConnect Technologies bid for cabling for $33,210.83 be approved for the Wincoff project as presented.
Okay, you have the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, anybody, let me see, anybody opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. Okay, Ms. Furtenbaugh, you want to do the one for Carolina Advanced?
Yeah, the second motion is that I'll make the motion that the Carolina Advanced Digital bid for the network elements for $114,667.52 be approved only after confirmation to the board chair that there is an equipment warranty included in this purchase, and I will say, an acceptable equipment warranty included in the purchase.
And they've got a bond?
Yeah.
They don't have.
Well, they're not doing services, they don't need the bond.
They don't need the bond.
I think that's a very reasonable request. Board members, I have Ms. Furtenbaugh's motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. Okay, thank you, Mr. Conley, for your representation tonight, for all that you did, thank you, Ms. Probst, also. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, board members, it's time for us to convene in closed session. This will be pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A3 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual, public officer, or employee, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged, and to discuss Molitor et al. versus Cabarrus County Board of Education. Do I have a motion that we move into closed session?
Somebody.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that being said, good night, ladies and gentlemen, hope you have, all have a wonderful July the 4th weekend, be safe, be careful, and we'll see you back on the first Monday night in August. Good night, everyone.